All right. Okay. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. Mr. Nigga, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Reid? Yes. Smith?
Here.
Lawler? Spicer?
Here.
Here.
And Mayor Atchison?
Here. First item is approval of the agenda. Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Anybody have any changes, deletions? Seeing none. Aye?
Aye.
And the opposed? And the agenda is approved as presented. First item. Presentations and recognitions of veteran states. And on November 11th, 1918, after four years of bitter conflict, the world rejoiced and celebrated the signing of an armistice by the Allied forces in the Federal Republic of Germany for the cessation of World War I. And whereas, on September 11th, 1919, thirty-four local veterans, soldiers, savers, and Marines recently returned from World War I in Europe, met and organized Leo Patrick Hammond Post Number 55 of the American Dejibean Albiin. And whereas, on November 11th, 1919, in order to remember the sacrifice the men and women made to ensure lasting peace, Woodrow Wilson, the twenty-eighth President of the United States, proclaimed an armistice day in the United States. And whereas, on June 4th, 1926, the United States Congress passed a concurrent resolution requesting Calvin Coolidge, the thirtieth President of the United States, to issue another proclamation to observe November 11th with all the appropriate ceremonies. And whereas, on May 13th, three years after World War I, Congress passed an act making November 11th in each year a federal holiday, a day to be dedicated and celebrated thereafter as Armistice Day. And whereas, in order for a grateful nation to pay homage to veterans of all wars, on June 1st, 1954, Dwight Eisenhower, the thirty-fourth President of the United States, signed into law a bill introduced by the U.S. Representative Edwin Reese from Kansas, renaming Armistice Day to Veterans Day. And whereas, in 1971, Richard Nixon, the thirty-seventh President of the United States, declared Veterans Day to be observed on the second Monday in November. And whereas, because the commemoration of Veterans Day was a matter of historic and patriotic significance, on September 20th, 1975, Gerald Ford, the thirtieth President of the United States, signed Public Law 9497, which returned the annual observance of Veterans Day the original date of November 11th. And whereas, Veterans Day continues to be observed on November 11th regardless of the day of the week on which it falls. Now therefore, I Dave Atchison, Mayor of the City of Albion, do hereby proclaim and call upon all residents of the City of Albion to observe a moment of silence at 11:00 a.m. on November 2020 in remembrance of all veterans who served to safeguard our heritage and freedom and to celebrate and proudly display the flag of the United States of America throughout the City of Albion on Wednesday, November 11th, 2020. And witnesswherever I appear to set my signature on the second day of November in the year 2020. Signed, Honorable Dave Atchison, Mayor of the City of Albion. Councilman Smith, I'll present this to you as the historian for Post 55.
All right, thank you, Senator. I would accept this and thank the mayor and the city for all veterans of Albion and Calvin County. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public council. Limited agenda is only. Individuals on the public wishing to make public law except three veterans. Proper or required.
I don't see anybody.
Okay. All right. The next item is the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are loaded on its own unit. And we have one item, which is the regular session minutes, October 19th, 2020, City Council, 19 October 2020. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the opposed? Okay. Items for individual discussion. First item, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2020, awaiting ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 3, to amend Sections 2, 241 through 2, 246. Do human relations have a motion? Your support?
Support.
Is there a discussion? City Attorney. Then you want to comment that has changed or was revised since the first meeting?
No, I don't believe we've... I don't recall that we made any changes since the last meeting. I guess I would just highlight for the council, we modified the pre-existing Human Relations Committee. We changed it to be the task force. The Human Relations Committee needed to go anyway because there are no standing committees of the city. We've made a seven-member task force appointed in the same way as the rest of our boards. Duties are outlined in Section 2-243, which incorporates a lot of the duties that the council set forth by resolution and also incorporates some of the duties that were pre-existing in the Human Relations Committee as needed. And that's pretty much it.
Comments by council? Seeing none, Mr. Nigga, would you read your roll, please?
Councilmember Clark, yes. Reid, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes. Yes, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. It's approved. Next item, Item B. Second reading and adoption of ordinance 2020-09 and ordinance to repeal Chapter 58, Article 4, Section 5897, insulting or no... in the public. May I have a motion?
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? Same question, City Attorney. Has anything changed since the last time? I don't believe services were last council meeting.
No, nothing has changed. And as we indicated last time, this is in light of finding U.S. Supreme Court laws was something that was unenforceable as repealing it because it's not enforceable and we're reserving the ordinance number for future use.
Thank you. Any further comments by council? Seeing none, Mr. Nigga, would you read your roll, please?
Councilmember Reid? Smith?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Next item, Item C. Discussion and approval of City Attorney contract. May I have a motion?
So move.
Support. City Attorney, would you give us a overview? What, if anything, has to change or modify?
Sure. The... There are two modifications to the contract. One is the proposed annual retainer increase from $95,000 to $97,500 based on the review provided by council, let's say, which was very, very favorable. It is about a 2.5% increase, which I thought was reasonable. The only other change is that the effective date of this agreement would be January 1, 2021. I set it up like that so that it wouldn't mess with this year's budget and it would be on the new budget, especially since we still have yet to do our budget session. So that way, we're not causing any consternation to the city.
Thank you. Questions by council? Seeing none, Mr. Nigga, would you read your roll, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark, yes. Reid, yes. And Mayor?
Yes. Next item, discussion approval of citywide asset management plan. May I have a motion?
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
Yeah. Last thing. Mr. Nigga, review of this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this was started under the previous city manager. And there were discussions about creating a citywide, one-way capital asset management plan. Through this plan, we'd be able to kind of incorporate and do a coordinated approach to address some of the infrastructure needs within the community. This plan includes waste, water, treatment, plant system, asset management plan, a water system, asset management plan, sanitary collection system, asset management plan, storm system, asset management plan, and transportation, asset management plan. And the most important, I feel, piece of this is the lead capital rules identification and mitigation plan. As a reminder, we have to have all of our lead services replaced within the next 20 years. That seems like a long time, but that will realistically be here before we know it. So this, allowing this, incorporating this in our plan just gives us a step ahead and we can locate these lines and work to get them replaced. So I would recommend approval of this.
Questions by council? Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Reading through this, I did come up with a few questions. And just because it's something that just bang, it hits me in the head here. Of course, a 20-year plan is going to cover 10 mayors and five councils. So we are making a decision for long into the future on this. As they were, I was reading through this in the opening statement from Ms. Snyder. They, in the first paragraph under background, they did mention our clients' SOL programs. I'm wondering who their clients may be? You know, who else are they working with? Just so we know the scope of what they're doing. And then a few other things that I could probably discuss with Ms. Snyder on the side so it's not the whole of the meeting. But there are a few things that I will be asking later on. I'll just ask her, Ms. Snyder, right?
If we asked one question, it was who were the other clients?
Yes.
I don't know, but I can reach out to maybe better than Whiteley and Associates and find out.
Thank you.
Any other questions by council? If you have a question on Item 5, is transportation asset management plan? That includes the streets?
Yes.
And what else? Street signs?
Um, I... It was part of it, just the streets.
Just the streets. Okay. I know we haven't started on the budget yet, but is it your intention? Is it your, you think the council, but they're going to present the council as wanting to include a plan for buffreying and replacing street signs? Because we're getting in pretty bad shape here in the city.
Yes, and I know that they were assessed under the S-Square program that M.O. Smith had rolled out. So we do have that information.
Okay.
Yes. And if you would like to incorporate the street signs, we can always reach out and include that in this plan. It would fit along with the items that are being addressed.
Well, the transportation, I was convinced that you could probably, the streets are included in that. The sidewalks, we know we have a plan for taking care of the intersections to make them ADA compliant, but we have a lot of sidewalk issues in the city. What is it going to be to have some kind of plan for that?
True, and I just want to remind council that the current ordinance that is in place, sidewalks technically do fall on the homeowner's responsibility. So I know that we had that sidewalk assessment and that the sidewalk committee was informed to make a decision on what to do with the funds collected through that assessment moving forward. As the current ordinance states, it is the homeowner's responsibility to maintain the sidewalks.
In Section 5 on the last page, camp phase two proposal, which they plan to roll out for Q1, Q2 of 2021, and their sidewalks, parking lots, facilities that's pretty open, vehicles and equipment, parks and recreation. So I would definitely like to have a discussion about those things as we move forward.
Any further comments by council? Councilman Clark?
So, for the sidewalk, it's all the homeowner's responsibilities, but I'm just making sure I'm still clear on this part. So if there's a tree that we have planted closer to the street, to the curb line, and it disrupts the sidewalk, then does that fall in the city's responsibility at that point?
I would say yes, if it's the tree, but I would fall for just the U-turn, like this. Take that private determination.
Did you hear the question, City Attorney? So, he's talking about if we plant a tree and like a right-of-way net tree versus sidewalk, responsible for fixing the sidewalk?
Right.
Ordinance says the sidewalk's at the homeowner's responsibility. So my argument would be that it's on the homeowner.
That's on the homeowner. So that's something we should look at. Because they did plant the tree. Or is what I'm saying is because there was a tree planted in the front of my house, but the old tree that was there disrupted the sidewalk. And I don't know when the law changed or when the ordinance changed. So when they dug a tree up and got rid of it because it was sad and put a new one in place, they also did fix the sidewalk completely and had to do it. So that's why I was asking, did it still with that or if that had changed?
Any other questions by council?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, I see indicated in here. Can you all hear me?
Yes. Very good.
Under Section 1, 2, 3, 4, there are some lead time necessary dates, and those have passed. Tell me how, what does that mean in terms of this proposal contract? Now, it has some October dates in there. So do those dates change? And I'm also, I'm wondering, when does, I guess this is a question for the city manager, when does the billing, the monthly billing payment start? Is it, yeah, I know that, I see that there is a outlined specifics for each category, a fee. And I think it's charged monthly and then the total budget, I think, monthly of 24. So when does that, when does that payment need to be made? Prior to them doing something or after they perform a certain thing? I guess I'm a little unclear on the financial piece of it.
Yes, and I have been in contact with our engineer, Mickey Bender, and we are aware of the dates that they will need to be updated. He is aware that before, there was a delay in getting it before council. So these dates will be updated and I will provide that to council once they are. And the billing will begin once we move forward with the actual program.
So billing will, payment will be made after we've signed the contract and moved forward? Okay, um, well, actually, I'm a little bit uncomfortable in approving something with dates that are outdated. I mean, I think I'd like to see something with current or future, future date. So, I mean, I guess I have a little issue with that, you know? But other than that, I think it's, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I was a little bit frustrated. So, that's why, I have to, we've been talking about the citywide asset management program for a long time coming. So I'd say this is moving in. I am uncomfortable with moving in without the date updated inside here. I trust that the city manager will get that rolling plus paying it again until services are started. So I think there's a barrier there for any sort of like payment and property and services that we need. This is, again, this has been two years, probably more, in making. It's very exciting. When you read through it, you see the quarter one and quarter two, we look at some of... So the first phase is the infrastructure stuff, right? The stuff that you don't see a lot of. And then, and then when you look at quarter one and quarter two put it together, and the phase two goes, and then they're talking about the sidewalks, facilities, vehicles, traffic, parks, recreation. They can't have nice things out in front of the public without having stuff behind the scenes. You know, it's like getting my furnace to work before I get new windows to keep the heater hot. So I'd say all this, I appreciate the city managers' diligence to get it done, getting it before council, especially with all of the, all the reasons to matter to this type of thing done right now that we can come up with. I just appreciate the hard work. So I yield.
Any other comments by council?
I have another comment.
Anything else, Mr. Nigga?
Thank you. While I appreciate Councilman Williamson's info and comment, I think I'd like to hear the city manager's response as to my request about the date. Will you let council know once those dates have been up, what the updated date will be? And basically, I guess when the contract is signed, I think you would know, yeah. I guess I'd like to hear from the city manager about that.
Absolutely. As I previously stated, I will, once this is signed and I communicate back with our engineer, Mickey Bender, that we are ready to go, I will relay those who've updated information to council.
So, so this is not our first time working with Mickey, right? We've worked with him in the past. I do recall his name mentioned at several, on several projects, right?
Any further comments by council? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Nigga, would you read your roll, please?
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Next item, write me a rule of the Irwin Avenue contract modification rule. May I have a motion? Support? Yeah. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is the first and only contract modification for this project. As a reminder, this project was under a duty price contract, which means when the contractor bids out debt for the project, they use estimated quantities and prices. So now that the project is complete and they were able to get accurate counts and numbers, they're at... cost for the project, we are looking for at $35,000.
Questions by council? Seeing none, Mr. Nigga, would you read your roll, please?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reid?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Item 8, approval of 2021 council meeting dates. May I have a motion?
So move.
Support?
Yeah, is there discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Item G, update on the DDA chamber and E consolidate?
Yes, so a doodle survey will send out to all members of council as well as the chairs and brass chairs of the boards. I have not received very many responses. I believe on council, only Councilmember Spicer and all I have. Right now, we are looking to possibly have another joint study session November 18th. I can resend that doodle survey to everyone, but if we would like to continue the conversations, it's important for people to respond so we can set something up.
Well, the 18th is a Wednesday. Any questions by council? I have a date, set a date for a town hall meeting.
So I spoke with Shannon today, actually. And we could have it at the ballpark and it would be around 80 people that sit comfortably and keep the social distancing. And I just want to bring that to council and see how the rest of you have a discussion before we move forward.
How many people?
About 80.
80.
This would be for a town hall? This would be for a town hall about police and community leaders, correct?
Yes. So the things that we're presenting to them, you know, they have whatever, whatever they want to talk about at that time and then we can hear those sides of it while we're looking at the changes or the considerations that they're bringing forth.
It would be great.
Mayor, for a town hall?
It'd be great for a town hall to have a little bit of structure. I know that, I know that we want to have a kind of an open mic type of feel to it where people can go up and say, hey, listen to this, stand aside, can we talk about it? I want to suggest that these types of things are really successful when you, when you open it with a little bit of dialogue between certain members of the community or community leaders. So I would suggest that in setting this date, we also, if there needs to be a small group of us to work with Haley, Senator Snyder, to put together kind of a structure for it and with the chief of police, that way it can kind of open with a little bit of a dialogue, which then invites people in to have that back and forth. And also maybe find an MC that can kind of keep things moving and keep things civil and productive.
Yes.
So if you want to set a date, I think that's a great idea.
So, so if you want to set a date, I think that's a great idea, I think we can do that. And I also want to say that the theater can also provide it to be online as well, so that it can be watched by people at home and submit comments from home. But I think that this would be a great way, I would do it regularly, but this would be a good first step in having more of a conversation with citizens, about their experience with public safety. And I think there's some good that will come out of that, and hopefully we can get a date set and work on that.
What was, what was the date again? It was the 8th? I'm sorry.
Mondays are good, which would be Monday the 9th, or the 16th, on a Tuesday, that's the 16th, correct? So that won't work. And Tuesday?
Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we're free. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, you could do an afternoon, not a Saturday. It doesn't, again, this is kind of a town hall, this isn't an official city council meeting, so there are many options.
Okay, so I'm looking at my calendar, so right, right now, the 9th, the 13th, or the 10th would be?
What was the date?
So let's do the 13th.
Okay, so the proposed date might be the 13th?
14th, 14th, excuse me.
Proposed date is the 14th of November, or what day of the week is that?
Saturday. Okay. Um, 3?
What date do you have set, city manager, for the budget session? I thought one of those was the 14th.
The 21st of the project.
Earlier than that, is that what you suggested?
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, I guess I was thinking, if we could do it early, that would be great. Instead of in the middle of the day when people are into their, yeah, I was just thinking earlier. But if 3 works for everyone, that's okay with me. I was thinking more like 10 or 11, okay, that's fine, though.
Okay, 3:00 PM on Saturday, the 14th. Any other issues?
I don't have that date, but...
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe council could set together a small work group, and we could like, we could set a date, we could set a date time, finding all the things we need to make it work, and then bring it on our next meeting. It pushes it out a little farther, but it also makes it more thoughtfully planned. If councilwoman Clark is okay with that, and I would happily jump on that work group, I think it's just an hour call over there.
Okay, so if, that's fine with me, but I don't, I would like for it to be within the week of our other meeting. I was trying to keep those schedules from being so busy.
Okay.
Because we're going into Thanksgiving, and a lot of people started leaving.
Especially with COVID, they'll probably be leaving earlier if possible. Maybe we can eat smarter and get it in there.
Okay.
We'll confirm it. That's up tomorrow. Any other comments? 10 to 10.
Okay, well, Mayor, can you repeat what was just said? The speaker is kind of going in and out. So what are we doing now with regard to the town hall meeting?
We're meeting with Councilwoman Clark tomorrow, and they're going to come back and let us know what they think the best date and time is.
Okay, sounds good, tomorrow, all right. So, so we won't know when the town hall meeting is until the next council meeting, or will, right? So we're looking at that meeting happening after the next council meeting? Am I incorrect?
More than likely, yes.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
Speak louder, we can't hear you.
Okay. Councilwoman Spicer, do you have any, any other questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Any other councilmember have comments? Okay. Future agenda items? Members of council about future agenda items? Let's see, the city attorney does?
It's, it's still early because it's the first meeting in November, but just to put it on the council's radar and the manager's radar, before the end of the year, we need to do our annual opt-out from the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Any other future agenda items? Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had some constituents interested, now that we do have a tree service under contract. They're wanting to know how we are moving forward, you know, how many are getting set up, you know, when is my tree to be taken down, that kind of a thing. But I just wanted to see if we could give some kind of an update on how we're moving forward with the new or old tree. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed?
I've got a question about leaves. I know I can take them with a green top, that's where I leave them, and can you also pack them?
Yes.
I wonder why they grow by my tree and didn't make my bags?
Were they wrapped, were they paper bags?
Yep, with a manure leaf bag.
I know.
May, may we have picked up leaves on a specific day, twice, other than, yeah. And I think it's everyone's.
Yes, sir.
It is?
Yes, I'm looking at it.
I will follow the grantor's deal.
On our next council meeting, because our budget discussion is Saturday, the 21st, I'll put on the agenda for council to vote to include. Whoever is elected to the next council, to include them as participants in that budget discussion, so they can ask whatever questions as participants during the budget review.
I want to make a question.
Budget review is set for Saturday, the 21st. Our next council meeting is Monday, the 16th. And on that agenda on the 16th, there'll be a vote. And I have the council vote on to invite and include anybody that's going to be sitting when the council gets sworn in December to participate, extend the invitation to participate in the budget discussions.
Sorry, that's the ask practice, we usually always do invite all newly elected officials to attend, so that's why I didn't add, have a natural agenda item, I didn't include it in my city manager's report to extend the offer to, if there are newly elected.
I would like to provide the opportunity to ask questions.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I did not have the opportunity to ask questions last time, so it was a little more than usual.
Saturday, you can ask your questions.
Huh?
Saturday, you can.
Yeah.
What time is that?
At 9:00 AM.
Okay. Any other future agenda?
Is that Saturday, the 21st and 9th?
That's correct.
Okay.
Public comments, any public comments this evening, Chief?
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, you can hear me, okay. Garrett Brown, 1016 South Superior Street. Just wanted to encourage everyone to go out and vote. Tomorrow's an important election nationally, state level and locally. And then also, I know in precinct three, there's a temporary, or a polling location change. Normally, it's at St. John's. This year, precinct voter, precinct three voters are voting at Tenant Hall near the United Methodist Church. So just wanted to encourage citizens to go out and vote, and to be aware of that, that polling location change. And then also just wanted to, in advance, thank all the people who are volunteering to do poll working and to run the elections, because that, that's something that's definitely needed and appreciated, and it's not easy, especially considering the circumstances this year. So good luck to all the candidates, and hopefully we will see what happens soon. Thank you.
Further public comments this evening? Hearing none, we'll close public comments and go to the city manager for her.
I think there is a public comment, isn't there?
Okay.
I see a hand up, don't I? Chief, Ms. Brown?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jody Brown, 504 Lincoln Street, mayoral candidate. I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is the day to be able to go and vote. And it's precincts two and three that both have a polling location change. Instead of voting down at St. John's Church, they are going to vote at Tenant Hall at Albion College. So just want to remind everybody, please go out and vote, and that's it, thank you.
That's all. Okay, city manager news report?
Yes, a copy of my report was included in the packet. Just an update, the city's COVID-19 preparedness and reopening was updated to reflect the overturn of Governor Whitmer's executive orders, as well as to highlight the recent emergency rules released by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, as well as MIOSHA. That was attached to the packet. The North Clark Street Road project, we had a fourth progress meeting last November 25th. A copy of the meeting minutes were included for your review. The 2021 budget study session is scheduled for Saturday, November 21st, at 9:00 AM here at City Hall, with the public attending, the Edison webinar. Any newly elected council members are invited and encouraged to attend and participate. Recreation Department, as my last city manager's report has stated, that we would be starting to hold recreation activities. The report for the week of October 19th and 26th is attached for your review. Unfortunately, the COVID cases in our county, we have had to close the indoor activities just under the guidance and recommendation of our local county health department. But that report is attached for you to review. The theft and bargaining for our public services employees wasn't initiated. I will be meeting with the union group this Friday to begin that process. Election Day, just a reminder, tomorrow, Tuesday, November 3rd, is Election Day. Go out there, it's very important to exercise your right to vote. I just want to give a big thank you and shout out to our city clerk's office for all of the hard work and preparation that has gone into preparing for tomorrow. I was just updated before tonight's meeting. Today, 1,725 absentee ballots have been issued, and 1,525 have currently been returned, so that is amazing. So I just want to give a big shout out to Clerk Canigo for all of her hard work. Since my report was released, I do have a couple of updates. The First, Second, Third, Hartwell and Wild Street, the pre-construction open house has been scheduled for Thursday, November 19th, from 6:30 until 7:30. This will be a virtual open house. You can find the information to join that call on the city's website. That will be hosted by Whitmer and Associates, they are the engineer who is working to develop that project. So it is important for any residents located within precinct one or in those neighborhoods to attend to find out what all of that project will entail. And just as a reminder, City Hall will be closed next Wednesday, November 11th, in observance for Recession Day.
Thank you very much. Mayor, councilmember comments? Any councilmember comments this evening? Councilwoman Reed?
Okay, just to reiterate, precinct two will be voting at the First Methodist Church on Michigan Avenue tomorrow. And then, secondly, I just wanted to thank everyone who worked with us on Saturday with the Fall Festival up at the Opportunity School. And I would like to thank Sustains Abuse, the Ministerial Association, that, that's a Baptist church, Freeway Church, and several of the Albion citizens that donated the finances and candy and money and stuff to, to make the bags for the kids. And then this is Addison, who stuffed all 120 bags that we passed out. And I think it, it really, really well. And the kids, they seem to have enjoyed, the rural people, we seem to have enjoyed it too. We had our signs and our shakers and everything, and we just really made a lot of noise and made it a good time. So I hope I haven't missed anyone, but to go, thank you very much. And the mayor, of course, he was there passing our bags, and so it all went well.
You did go well.
Great.
I was going to say, looking forward to a really great day tomorrow with the left Albean. And then I want to remind folks, especially here locally, we always, we always usually have a good example to set for the rest of the state in behaving themselves and not making it wrong. I just want to remind people who are campaigning to observe the rules about how far the distance that you have to beat the polling stations, make sure that we're not harassing voters, even if we're really excited about our campaigns. So just a nice reminder to follow the rules. Thank you.
Councilwoman Spicer, did you have comments this evening?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, as everyone else has stated, encourage everyone to get out and vote, because your voice can, your voice matters, and it can be heard through your voting. So I want to say, good luck to, to the contestants, and may the best and most fitting person for the positions be a winner. Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I will follow up on Mr. Reed's comments, and thank everyone who participated and came out to participate with the American Legion and the Fair Food Drive Thru. It was much more successful than we had ever anticipated. So thank you very much for that, to all the citizens and the vendors who participated. And also, it's that time of year again, we're coming into time for Choice for Tots. The American Legion Post 55 here in Albion works with the Marine Corps out of Kalamazoo, and we handle the eastern part of Calhoun County, from Marshall eastward and down to Homer and northward. So more will be coming out about that, watch Facebook and other things as well. But in this year of COVID, things are a little bit strange and crazy. So we're probably going to be asking for a lot of people, for a lot of help, for a lot of kids. And other than that, let's get out and vote tomorrow, let's have a great time. I appreciate Councilwoman Williamson's comments. Let's be civil, let's be right, let's show them how Albion works. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark? Just a, just saying that would come to echo everyone else, for everyone to get out and vote, and good luck to everyone that is running. And you mentioned Choice for Tots, and it reminded me, we're also coming up with Thanksgiving, and the donations and things that we have for as many people that can donate, for the families that maybe are not working or, you know, they have hardship at this time. As soon as possible, so we can start working on that also.
Any other comments? I think everybody said one. I do want to express my gratitude to the city clerk, and they have had a long week. And tomorrow's going to be a very long day, but thank you very much for all that you do. And it's been very single so far, and I think we're going to have a very large turnout, which is great. I echo everybody else's sentiments about encouraging people to go out and vote. It is your opportunity to be part of the solutions and part of the local government at the national level, state level, and council. And with that, may I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Law?
Someone. Support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Someone. Support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Good night. Good night.